Moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm under the order, I have a suggestion, please like change the agenda. I think we have an agenda item two. My first one is this.
Yes, so it is by.
I think it's K four.
K four.
I believe, in making a motion to adopt the agenda, we add that agenda item, but we move the position of it up to, I believe it would be E two. And also, with the resolution we had for former supervisor, if you did pass the, if we get adopted, I guess the regular position would only be agenda at K three and move the presentation of that to later on tonight when the agenda will be here, that would be P one.
Should we do it as P one under presentations and then they wouldn't have to read the public media?
No, no, no.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
That'd be fine. P one, if that, if that was the rest of it. So, since I probably just confused myself, we're moving the agenda item K four to E two and then K three to P one.
But K three will stay where it is and you're adding.
You know, right, I'm saying, I'll just add a couple of different places, because P one, thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion made in the House. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion taken. Anything else for these things?
Mr. Chairman, you have two sets of minutes asking for adoption. One is your regular meeting, October seventh, twenty nineteen, that are presenting for approval. Also, as I was signing the archive copy of the October twenty-second, twenty eighteen special call meeting minutes, I noticed that there was an error compared to the actual adoption of the close meeting motion from that meeting. And so, I corrected those minutes and asking for you to adopt the corrected version included in the package. Have me go into more detail. And this okay, vote on the, one of those where I was absent? Or should we do it separately? Uh, separate this one.
So it's only two motions then? I'll make the motion that we adopt the corrected minutes from the ten point two eighteen meeting as presented in the package.
Second.
Motion made in the House. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain since I wouldn't hear.
Any other motion to adopt the other three sets?
Just one or two.
One or two.
Yeah. One or two.
I don't make that motion unless there's some correction to it.
I'll second it.
Motion made in the House. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Mr. Johnson, public comment. Anyone wishing to join the team, please raise your hands in the left side, state your name in the distance, your hand. Give your comments to the board. All ready? First. Public comment, all right.
Good afternoon. Tomorrow's election day. Hope everyone gets out to vote. My name is Kurt Whitson, I'm resident in Hampton District and also a candidate for the Hampton District CEO for Supervisors. I want to thank John Witzensky for his service the last four years. I said before, thank you, John. I want to address for a moment directly on Ms. Smith and Mr. Parrish, who, based on the current board, will be the only members on the new board that will be convened up for January one. And specifically, what I want to address is a newspaper ad that was in Rapid County News this past Thursday, paid for by the head of the Washington DC Conservative Thin Tank, in which my opponent brought up three points to disparage me. And I'm concerned about these comments in light of the fact that if I do win tomorrow, I'll be serving with at least Ms. Smith and Mr. Parrish and so, I want to reassure them a few things. First point, my opponent, in this ad sponsored by an outside person, stated that because I've made a personal choice to send my children to a private school outside this county, that I don't have a connection to the public schools. When my son and I went to the homecoming game, the football game the other night, I felt very connected to that school. I appreciate Shannon Grimsley very much. She's competent, she's sensitive to the tax challenges of our community, and I've spoken with her on many occasions, and I have total confidence in her, and I'm confident I can work well with her. I also am friends with many of the members of the school, and I'm confident that if I'm on your board, I will have a good relation with, relationship with them as well. The second point in this disparaging ad suggested that during my service on Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority, the minutes of those meetings covering a four-year period suggested that I would miss more than one or two of those meetings. I also reviewed those minutes, and I won't get into the details of how many meetings I did or did not attend, but if you look at the business activity in Sperryville that is fully propped up by the public utility, the board at which I sat on with a good group of people, it is incredible to me that anybody would question my performance on that board. And you can ask any commercial account holder or resident in that community, if I did a good job for them and listened to them and responded at all times, you will hear nothing but yes. Third point, my opponent has alleged that I'm not around, that I'm always in New York or in Washington DC or apparently in China. If I work with Ms. Smith, Mr. Parrish and the new board in the beginning of January one, I assure you, I will be present. I would not have taken on this, this campaign nor would I run for this seat if I didn't think I could do the job. I'm a professional, I manage my time properly, and I take this duty seriously. I've been in New York three times since nineteen eighty. I go to Washington DC once a quarter. I don't have an office in Washington DC because I work from my home in Arizona. And finally, yes, I do travel internationally for work on occasion. On average, no more than twenty or thirty days a year total. Again, I'm smart enough to have calculated what I can do as a professional and what would be required of me if elected with this position. So I speak specifically to Mr. Parrish and Ms. Smith to reassure you that if I'm elected tomorrow, you can count on me at all times. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Pelican, I live in Woodville, I'm Red Oak Mountain, and if you know, as most, all of you should know, it's probably one of the most beautiful view sheds in the county of Rapid County. I'm hopeful that there's anything that comes before you that might discuss the view shed from Rapid County County, you consider, like we do, I import it as to our county given as such. While, while I'm here, I want to extend an invitation to the members of the board, on behalf of the Christmas committee and its director, the Christmas parade, we hope each and every one of you will be present for the parade, will ride in the parade with us, we will provide cars for you. So I'm hoping that either through Mr. Curry or myself, you will notify us if you'll be able to ride in the parade. It's December the eighth, it's a Sunday like always, and we're hoping that we have God forbid weather that we always have for our Christmas parade, so we're looking forward to it. And I do encourage all of you to be a part of our Christmas parade. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board of DTE is from Hampton District. I take a little bit of homage to Mr. Whitson's taking this opportunity to continue the lobbying personally to the dental himself. Of course, we all know who he is, there's enough science lesson who he is. I don't think this is the proper form for that. Secondly, the county is faced with a lot of issues, much more important, I think, than some of the, that I'll bring up, from the old farms sale to the view shed to the cell towers, which I'm adamantly opposed to. But looking at the report of the dismal failure of the signs that took me a year to get for the village of Woodville, saying that caution, watch out for children, total failure. The only time that it works, I've mentioned this before, this is redundant, but the only time it works is when the sheriff is sitting there doing a great job, since the sheriff lead starts. So I'm going to start lobbying again for probably another year, maybe two years, who knows, with this new board. We have to go to photo enforced tickets. If you want some revenue stream, stream, you need to do that. Does it take up much? It's a, it's a monopole, the two little small boxes, run by solar, they're throughout all the communities in this metropolitan area, and they do generate serious income through. But most importantly, it slows the people down. And I've got a vested interest in Woodville because of three young girls, children that live there. Beat this story to death, took a year to beat those two signs. So, I'm going to urge the members that are staying here and the members that will come to start thinking about monopoles. I mean, I think not only in Woodville, but the village of Sperryville, in Flinville, New York, Washington. It's going to take, it's going to end up taking a tragedy to get you guys and the ladies to come to the conclusion that we need to slow this stuff down. My conclusion, go nats.
From Forest Market City from the Piedmont District, just wanted to say again that I oppose the two lattice cell phone towers that are in application for the Flinville sites and Scranton sites. I think that'd be unsightly and take away from the character of the county, and if we are going to have cell phones, cell phone towers inevitably at any point, I would hope that there would be some kind of mandate that they be hidden or stealth in any way possible. And also, as far as the, with the county building update and repairs, I was thinking while you're in the process of going over whatever repairs need to be, maybe look into getting some proposals for maybe solar panels or any kind of alternative energy infrastructure that might be a large upfront cost, but might save money in the future and also be a good road for the county to go down. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Katie's Glen, Jackson District. I don't know how many of you watched the national win. All right. But during that, during that presentation, there was a commercial by T-Mobile that said that they were putting out six hundred megahertz, one-third what C ninety S are showing in their coverage maps, and it could do five G. My understanding is T-Mobile's going on both Boston and Sperryville. Before you approve any new towers, I strongly recommend you get T-Mobile's coverage maps because I bet you get done, need two towers, when it's one-third the frequency, less than one-third frequency. Thank you.
Anyone else care? Yes.
I think I'm going to, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District, I think I'm going to introduce something a little bit lighter. I read the Wall Street Journal, and in their real estate section in April of this year, they had this really great article, and it said, "When nine-to-five job meets paradise." And it's talking about families who have decided that they don't want the rat race of living in cities, and they want to move to another place where the quality of life is better for themselves and for their kids. Now, this, this addresses, in case anyone goes back, it's, it's saying going to resort areas. But I was thinking, what a wonderful place this place could be if we can somehow tap into a market of people who want to get out of the rat race and want to move to a place that's wonderful to raise their children. Our schools are wonderful, the environment here is just superb, you're close to the park and all kinds of wonderful opportunities. The only thing that's holding a lot of families back, of course, is broadband or cell phones. And we also need to have more of a welcoming environment for people who want to bring businesses here. And so, that's just something to think about. The other thing I wanted to address again is the comprehensive plan. I went to the joint meeting last week, and I found it very interesting. The problem I have with it is that it tends to get into a combative atmosphere rather than collaborative, and we all need to learn to work together to find out how we can get things accomplished together. The comprehensive plan, people seem to be wanting to extend working on it, and in my opinion, there's no such thing as a perfect plan. The consultant from the Berkeley Group did say that there were four items on that presentation that he gave to everyone, that was very well done. And Chairman Light said that there were two things he was fairly sure they could accomplish fairly quickly, the other two he thought they could do as well. So my point is, I think we need to get this thing done because every day that this comprehensive plan is not complete, we are in violation of the Virginia Code. And so, people are very concerned about lawsuits and different things, and the more you prolong this thing and kick it down again, say to, sorry to say, that a blue ribbon commission is going to take months more to do this thing, as opposed to, Chris Parrish did step up and say he thought this thing could be at least ready for something in December and to get it done. This, okay, then I have another one of these wonderful things. It's called the power of a leader. True leaders are not those who strive to be first, but those who are first to strive and give their all for the success of the team. True leaders are first to see the need, envision the plan, and empower the team for action. By the strength of the leader's commitment, the power of the team is unleashed. That's what we're looking for here, is everyone working together. Long time ago, when I was working, I used to take seminars in junk, and the one seminar in particular struck me, and to this day, I like it, and it's called Check Your Ego at the Door. You're all working together, it's not an individual combative relationship, and I'd certainly like to see that in the future, and I hope that works. Thanks.
Thanks, you're welcome. Anyone else? One second. Anyone else? Tom?
I apologize for interrupting you this late, I'm the one who brought up the view shed, and I thank the gentleman for his remarks. The view shed was introduced as a term of a view shed. I heard that in the suspense was there, I mean, in the planning commission meeting. The people who were constructing this tower came forth and said, "We had a location for the tower, but the family objected because it affected their view shed." So that's where we come with the word view shed. The people who were putting the tower on their property objected to the first location because it affected their view shed, and I speak for myself. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else care to pick? The Republican Committee, follow. About our students, Dr. Kent.
You got it? Well, greetings from your RCPS family. This weather is just gorgeous, and I think Rapid really has a reawakening in the fall, it's just gorgeous, so I hope you're all enjoying that. RCPS is celebrated in October as Bullying Prevention Month, where students work together to support one another and stamp out bullying. Although different spirit weeks were held at each of the schools, they each had Unity Day in common, where RCPS students and faculty all wore orange on October twenty-third to show unity for kindness, the signature event of National Bullying Prevention Month. Yes, I even wore orange, it's totally not my color, I found something. On October seventh, we were notified by the Virginia Department of Education that RCPS was awarded a Virginia Department of Education Farm to School Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. The grant project proposes to improve our kitchen equipment and salad bars in the cafeterias to better utilize fresh produce grown by students and local producers, as well as purchase a mobile kitchen cart to expand harvests of the month, taste testing, Farmer Friday demonstrations, support an after-school kids cooking club, and provide a modality for push-in classroom nutrition lessons. Congratulations to our food service department for all its hard work in getting that grant and also in earning RCPS the Local Food Hub Trailblazers Award, which Mandy Butler, food service director and commit-to-be-fit nutritionist, accepted on behalf of the cafeteria staff and CTVF on October seventeenth in Charlottesville. The award was given for innovation and partnering with local farms to increase the amount of fresh locally sourced food served in the, in the cafeterias. That's one of the three prongs of our commit-to-be-fit program. We are very proud to continue our work to continue to provide local Virginia grown fresh foods in our cafeterias. October was also the month of our annual homecoming festivities at the high school. On October eighteenth, at the homecoming games, the homecoming court was recognized. Congratulations to homecoming prince and princess Donovan Zook and Kayla Compton, and homecoming king and queen Richard Willard and Moby Woodward. Thanks so much to the Rapid County Sheriff's Office for running concessions on, at crazy home game night, and thank you to the huge number of community members who came out to support the students. The homecoming dance, the Mardi Gras, took place at the Farming Thing on October nineteenth, and a great time was had at all. On October twenty-eighth, RCHS hosted a special, special FASPA night for seniors and families led by a financial aid expert from North Herabax Community College. The presentation guided parents through the process of submitting the FASPA and the benefits of receiving federal aid to help pay for college. After the presentation, ongoing support for families was and is still made available at the high school by contacting Leah Slaton, who's our full-time Virginia College advising corps coach, a full-time position made possible through a grant from the FASPA. Last week, the RCPS profiled a graduate team accompanying twenty-six students to the Winchester Medical Center to participate in the Come Explore Health Professions Program. This event was designed to let students talk to a variety of health science professionals and learn about the specific requirements and purpose of each job, like which instruments to use, what training is required, how to work with a variety of patients, and what to do, and what do different health careers pay. The hands-on program allowed students to visit different career stations, such as radiology, where students could see X-rays of items inside humans and pets, including coins and scissors, a feeding station where students could practice feeding each other pudding instead of they were feeding an infirmation, that was very interesting, an Oregon petting zoo, where students could see and touch the heart, lungs, eyes, and kidneys of a pig, yuck, a station where students could practice cauterizing and stapling chicken breasts, a hand washing station where students were able to practice correct hand washing to remove all germs, and two ambulances, with one being set up entirely to treat and address needy patients. The students who attended learned so much, and I wouldn't doubt if our health science career pathways courses that we now offer in partnership with Rapid, or Rapid Sea, sorry, will become even more popular after this. Please join us in congratulating our competition cheerleaders. They won their regional championship and are headed to the States on Saturday. The RCHS theater team represented Rapid County well in the VHSL Varsity Regional Theater Tournament last Saturday, earning them the runner-up title for their powerful delivery of the three realities, another play written by our English teacher and theater coach, Russell Paulette. The RCHS thespians will advance to the superregional tournament to be hosted at the high school on Thursday, November fourteenth at four PM. So we hope you will come out and support the team. I hope you were able to see some of our students' artwork displayed at this year's Rapid County Fall Art Tour. The art displayed was both a collaboration of all art students in the art classes at both the elementary and the high school, as well as some select pieces from students in our gifted art program. The artwork blended in well among the amazing pieces by such talented artists, and we could not be more proud of the creativity and artistic expression produced by our students, led by our talented art teachers, Joy Rubinson and Amy Gray. On October twenty-sixth, the PTO hosted a wonderful Halloween event, the PTO Monster Mash. Activities included trunk-or-treating, costume contests, which my daughter's born with, a commit-to-be-fit obstacle course, crafts, steam activities, raffles, games, and more. It was a wonderful evening, and I'm sure many parents truly appreciated with the inclement weather that impacted our area on Halloween night. On October thirty-first, the elementary school held its annual Halloween parade, where students in grades pre-K through second grade dressed in their best costumes to march around the school to the amusement and cheers of the student body and staff. If you did not get a chance to see the smiling faces on social media, I hope you'll visit the page and see. Last week, October twenty-eighth through November first, Rapid High School celebrated Red Ribbon Week, sponsored by our high school students against destructive decisions or sad. Students celebrated with a spirit weekly, each day focusing on a different encouraging message. Monday was pajama day, to wake up drug-free. Tuesday, wear a shirt with a number day, to be reminded that every life counts. Wednesday, blue and gold day for Panther pride, and to demonstrate that we are all in this together. Thursday, tie-dye day, to not let drugs tie you down. And Friday was rare red for Red Women Ribbon Week, to show that life is a journey and you should travel drug-free. Embedded in throughout the week were presentations, class meetings, and specialized team support groups led by our school's social worker, Ms. Kathy Sager. Band students are conducting the annual fruit sale, so orders must be placed by November eleventh. For more information, please contact Jason Hira, our band director. We invite the community next week to our annual Veterans Day Assembly, Monday, November eleventh at ten AM at the high school gym. Our guest speaker this year is Staff Sergeant Jennifer Shanks of the US Air Force. Please be with us as RCPS leads the community in honoring the service and sacrifice of our veterans and their families. And as always, thank you so much for all your dedication to supporting the youth of the community. We cannot offer all these amazing opportunities to our students or services to our families without that support, so thank you. Any questions for me? Is it busy?
I just want to bring up something that I see quite a bit of on social media as a concern, and I know that Rapid County is not alone in this. You seem to have a lot of problems with cars not respecting our buses and passing them when they have their stoplights. And I'm just wondering, you know, what, what can we do, and you didn't answer this today, but it just seems like the problem is getting worse instead of better, to the point where I understand the Sheriff's Department escorted a bus the other week, because this happens so many times. So, what can we do to help? What's the long-term solution?
Thank you so much for bringing that up. In fact, we just had a crisis management team meeting this morning. It has been a great concern to us, especially since it seems to keep happening on this one area on two eleven, and those cars are speeding by us pretty quickly. So I had sent an email to Mr. Goff and the sheriff, and hopefully we can come together with a proactive campaign about, you know, you're breaking the law, putting students in danger this way. We're going to take that seriously, you know, after me. And to do that, to help, we have purchased camera systems for our school buses. So we're, we want to get the word out about that, too. Hopefully it will deter this from happening, and it's very dangerous, and as a mother of three kids who get on the bus every day, that's really scary thing. So hopefully, we just get the word out, hey, you know.
So hopefully we just get the word out, hey, you know, we're getting cameras and more to share, so don't pass the school buses.
Very good news.
Thank you so much for bringing that up.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks.
With the modification to the agenda, you're K for this point. The superintendent reached out, and her staff reached out to me over the last week or two regarding the FY 2021 budget schedule. And Ms. Grimsley, Dr. Grimsley and I have had some conversations about the upcoming budget, particularly as it relates to preschool funding and more as all the emergency funding that you stepped forward and provided to make sure that the preschool program could move along with last year. And we're very fortunate to receive the B E C F grant that is helping this year and part of next year, but not all of next year. So with that, there's an interest from Dr. Grimsley, and I share that interest, to make sure we're getting ahead of decisions that will need to be made in the FY 2021 budget. And to that end, she's recommended a joint meeting of the board and school board at the night of the school board's February meeting, which would be February 11th. So wanted to strike what we could to bring this to the board. She will be discussing it with the school board at their next meeting on the 12th of this month. And it would be helpful if the board supervisors, at least who are carrying over, believe this is a good idea to have a joint meeting. It'd be helpful for her to know that, so she can bring that message to her board. I was thinking of putting the entire meeting budget calendar on this agenda, but it's just a little bit too early. I'm trying to solidify a few things. I'll be asking the board to adopt the budget meeting calendar next month at the December meeting for all the extra meetings that need to be held through May to get the FY 2021 budget adopted. Is there anything you'd like to add, Dr. Grimsley?
I think you covered it. We're just interested in having this community conversation around something that's not exactly mandated right now, K-12. But it will require all of us to come together and make some important decisions, especially if we find out that our grant funding won't continue. And I'll have that information by that time as well, so we can make a better choice.
Well, I know there had been a practice of having joint meetings in the past, and I think two years ago it was snowed out. And then last year, we carried on the new tradition of not having a meeting. I think it's good practice to have a joint meeting.
Personally, I'd like to see it in a couple of years, quite frankly. And they're always, the schools is half your budget. So it's important to be informed during the budget cycle, but then you can have that feedback loop later in the year and understand how those investments are being utilized.
Excuse me, what would be in a smaller room setting or in the auditorium?
Most likely, that one would be in a larger, larger room. I expect a lot of people would want to hear about road traffic.
I was thinking, better to have empty chairs and crowded hallways.
There also used to be quarterly meetings between the board chair, the school board chair, the superintendent, and the county administrator.
Superintendent and I meet monthly.
Years ago, those meetings were monthly.
Monthly?
The two chairs and the two administrators.
That's something we could consider. So I don't know if board members will be continuing knowing you're scheduled. But if you can check them and provide some feedback to Dr. Grimsley before her meeting next week, and if that tape doesn't work, then we'll have to track down something else.
Sure.
Treasurer's reports are in the packet. I want to make the board aware that updated expenditure reports were attached to the meeting packet today, midday, actually. I reviewed the reports over the weekend, found a couple expenditures that were not classified correctly, some under my control. And Ms. Nick made those corrections pretty quickly and was able to upload and correct it forward. It doesn't change the overall, it's just moving things around a little bit. Cash remains tracking last year, kind of dead on. So it shows that your FY 20 budget is pretty tight, and because we need that going into this year. So if there's any questions, we can move on. There are two payable check runs in the packet. However, before we get into that, there is a payment to Walker Jones, an amount of $682.50 of the Bragg One litigation support. Be appropriate for board members to acknowledge potential conflict of interest that place the form in front of your seat. I'd like to read that to the minutes. Now, whenever you read.
Say, "Push down." The Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115-H. As a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115-H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, whose firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115-H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115-H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing legal defense for members of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115-H, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
With that, the October 15, 2019 check run in total of $17,515.50 is provided for your approval, as is the November 4 check run in total of $101,882.82 is presented. Happy to answer any questions.
I have questions, Karen. Oh, Mr. Currie, what's the refund here for the Tom McAppelon's Trail Club of about $6,500? Is that a annual budget? Why not? Or where is that?
The P A T C came forward and requested not tax exempt status. They actually reached out to me about a year ago. And when I looked at the code, it didn't appear, that appeared to be something the board would have to do. But in looking at that further, actually, the General Assembly has listed them in a series of about 1,000 different groups that is by designation tax exempt. And so the Commission of Revenue made that change, and that value is worth free taxes back taxes.
So this is real estate taxes on the little house they have up here on the next of.
It's up. And they hope to have that be a public parking area or access to the trail, an improved public parking area at some point in time, I think. Doesn't do a whole lot right now.
So does that just come out of the general fund then? Or is it a plan for that?
No, we didn't, but.
I know it's a small amount.
It's in there.
A small amount.
It's certainly within the revenue perspective of the overall real estate revenue that we'll receive. This is weird.
If there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve and pay the bills.
No second.
Excuse me, motion made for a second. All those who think that say aye.
Aye.
All opposed in name, pay the bills.
Thank you. Next is just an update on your board contingency fund and the document recognition of your action at the last meeting. I will note to you that there are a couple of positions for staff who elected to take health insurance that who didn't last year. And of course, that decision was made after we adopted the budget. I'll be watching that, and would like to come to you January time to get that reconciled, and that will be coming out of contingency as well. No actions for today. Yes, sir. For appointments, we still have a vacancy for the Agriculture and Parks District Advisory Committee, and that could be for any landowner, perceived obligations. Next is trying to get a head start on some of the appointments that will need to be made at year-end. And the Board of Building Appeals, if you recall, about a year and over, I guess, April 2018, the board appointed five representatives in staggered terms to clean up all the records of appointments to that Board of Building Appeals. To make those, to make them stagger, two individuals had a term ending date of December 31, 2018, Mr. Kaiser and Mr. Taylor. Building Inspection's Office reached out to those individuals to determine whether they have an interest in continuing to serve. They hope to do. So it's my recommendation to appoint them to a four-year term beginning January 1, 2020, ending December 31, 2023.
And I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph Kaiser and Thomas Taylor to this Board of Building Appeals for the four-year term.
A second.
Motion made in a second. All of you think that say aye.
Aye.
All opposed in name. Two good feet.
Yeah, I believe, because Mr. Kaiser says the easiest job he's ever met. I never met. Next is the appointment to the Rapid United County Reparational Facilities Authority. As you recall, Ms. Mastiff submitted a resignation earlier this year. The group thought they might be able to come up with an applicant. That didn't happen. The vacancy was noticed in the newspaper the last two editions. I've not received any applications, so in view to the public, if you think of anybody who may be interested in serving on the Rapid Board, I'll put him in my direction. Next is Planning Commission. As you're aware, Ms. Holly Meade tendered her resignation effect at the end of this calendar year. She noted that her day job at Fox Here is consuming much of her time, and she didn't believe she was able to give everything she would need to this local purpose. It's a big loss, so Mrs. Israeli just noticed to you in the public that she did resign. Presume that the board would want me to advertise this vacancy in the newspaper. I'm not sure when appointment, when you would want to make an appointment. Do you want to hold that out for the new board? Or if you want to try to get that done in December, if you get applications, and that would drive when we target advertising.
I think it would be appropriate to wait for the new board.
So perhaps I can run ads in December? Or do you want to wait till January, thinking of priorities?
I don't see any problem with running ads in December.
I'm inclined to get it done at the January meeting and run ads in December. I just wanted to tell us the board representative to the Planning Commission that it will be a real loss to the Planning Commission. Holly's preparedness, professionalism, the thoughtful approach to the job and that body will be sorely missed. I don't wish her much luck in her continued work in Fox Here.
I gather consensus is to run ads in December, and I will do that. Next is continued vacancy on the Fire Labor Board for the Wakefield District. As you recall, we have the pleasure of the Wakefield Board Member that will be turning over here in a couple of months. So we haven't had any luck finding anybody. Maybe the next board member will be able to find somebody to fill that seat. Whoever that name. Bring us the committee reports.
Committee reports. Are there any committee updates, Mr. Curry, from this one?
Well, I guess I should go first there. We did not meet yet, and really, we now have a full committee that we could have met, except for the fact that I really didn't want to burden Mr. Curry with so much other things on the plate. We've got the trash problem, and we've got the electoral problem here at the Sheriff's Office, the dispatch center. I thought about we've got too much more on the plate. We'll definitely be scheduling a meeting for this month because after tomorrow, we'll have some sort of idea of what the continuity will be on some of these committees. I guess Mr. Curry could give us an update on those projects during his, his kind of. I guess Mr. Currie could give us an update on those projects during his kind of shake of the day.
I don't...
You getting Mr. Broadband?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Currie, a member of the Broadband Committee, Bill Dant and I traveled to Richmond on October 17th and had a meeting with Evan Fineman, who's the governor's chief broadband advisor, just to feel the Rapid Hand County's unique challenges in rural broadband. Some of the takeaways from the meeting, he suggested that perhaps in the future, we take on a regional county approach, perhaps get some funding through Go Virginia. That's something to be explored by the committee. We know Madison is very active right now with Orange County in trying to do something regionally. There's a possibility that we may be able to do something with Madison as well and piggyback on that. It's a little too early to tell. He advocated that Rapid Hand County take two parallel steps. The first being that pursuit of funding, which I mentioned, do regionally through Go Virginia, or through local revenues that we might be able to put into our budget. There are certainly other ways to find funding through grants, whether that's VATI, which the Board's familiar with now, that's the Virginia Telecom Initiative. We would have to find a private provider to team with. And at the federal level, the U.S. Department of Agriculture has the Reconnect Program, and they recently put $3.8 million into Virginia, into rural communities. And Margaret Bonham in our committee has attended a conference of theirs, and I think we may revisit USDA for next year and see what grants may be available out there. So in addition to the pursuit for funding, his other recommendation was to find the internet service provider ISP. Most of ours at this point are WISP, so wireless internet service providers, in which to partner with to go after grants such as this. And the names keep, we keep getting more and more names as to who's involved and active in adjacent counties, such as data stream, which used to be OmniPoint in Falkir County, and I think Virginia Broadband is Gavin Culpepper, and of course, we have Piedmont Broadband. So this is something the committee can continue to explore, but will need to, the county will need to, those are the graphic partner, or find one of those providers that might best fit what Rapid Hand needs. The committee, that as a whole, met on October 21st. Mr. Currie, if you want to...
Sure. Generally, it was a rehash of where we were, but we learned that there are, there's some private interest in trying to help prepare a plan or study for the community to help us understand how do we make your provider so that we are lined up to apply for VATI. There are individuals in the community who are willing to fund such a study. Doing that with private funds through the government gets complicated. So it appears that, independent of the Broadband Committee, someone at work will be underway, and it won't be a government product. That will make the buy-in from the Board ultimately a little bit more complex and difficult, but that will be, that will have to be that outside group's goal, to perform a study in a way that is easily understandable and can be accepted by the Broadband Committee and the Board of Supervisors. I understand that that is kicking off and getting underway, tens of thousands of dollars.
Who would it have to be?
I don't know the answer to that. And during the meeting, it was third, it was, the person's name was not identified. Mr. Summers was coordinating the person. We would have conversations with the individual. So I don't know. So again, all that leads to difficult job of preparing it and presenting it in a way that can be accepted by the government as valuable information.
Yeah, I can see the difficulties there. We have to partner with someone we don't know. We don't know exactly where the mic's going, so we don't know if there's any type of strings attached to whatever it is.
Yeah, and that's why we're not partnering. And so if they bring a base product forward, and it appears valuable to us, then great. If they don't, then obviously, there are shortcomings. The alternative, of course, is to appropriate $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 to do something ourselves and run through RFP process and all that.
It may cost us something to evaluate what a private entity produces.
Depending on what that product is. If it's a physical, if it's documentation of what we have, and what we have it, where we have it, that's probably easier to accept. If it's recommendations on who the community should work with, that's entirely something different, and you really need to know what's behind that recommendation. It's more than we have right now, so I think it's a worthwhile opportunity, and one that the Board has the option to accept for a beneficial purpose or not, depending on what comes out down there.
I don't think, I don't think a meeting has been set, the next meeting has been set by for the committee, but I think we'll meet at least once before the end of the year, later this month or early this summer.
Was this the same speaker that directed?
Yes. So I've been part of the Regional Commission three or four times now. We have, but we wanted to, we wanted to meet with them one-on-one.
Very effective.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The work has been completed on parking space of Park. And it looked like when I came by this afternoon that they were adding some additional gravel to sort of level that off and make it more user-friendly. I know they voted to do that at the last meeting, so that should be happening today. It was a quieter meeting, though. The one thing, and unfortunately, Art just stepped out, that I was, I was looking for some insight on possibly was during the public comment period, it came up about Stewart Field use in Amasville, and whether that was to be something that the county would want to take on as a project, or if that should continue as I understood it was satisfied for use for the ball clubs that are using it now. And I guess, I know it had been revisited, I think, in 2017 before I became board member, but I remember the issue, and I don't think that we can think of this accounting. I believe it was gifted to us as ball fields, and that's, that's the use that we have designated it for.
I believe there are some deed restrictions. We're in the middle of a five-year term on the lease. I met with Mr. Dodson, he got a tour of the facility, which I had not visited before. It's pretty impressive to think that that organization has built what's there. My recommendation to Mr. Dodson was that if he believes, if he wants to pursue a change in the relationship from the lease arrangement now, or five years, the middle of the term is the best time to do that. We don't want to wait till the end of the term and then be trying to hurry up before the term ends or something like that. We work that out during the middle, and that could be a longer term, or whatever you may want to bring forward. So I didn't gather from him that he was anxious to change anything. He's doing a great job and have invested quite a bit in the building and in the site. And I know there's been some discussion in the public whether the building could be used more heavily or monetized, and I suggested to Mr. Dodson that that was a great opportunity for RA, if they, you know, are looking for ways to monetize, that they can, they consider that, but it was there based on the lease of my RE.
They do let the community use it, but they have to contact, we hear, as part of the lease, that we required, that seems to escape a lot of people, but this board required that the facility remained locked. But Mr. West would remember that, that that was in our contract, isn't that the facility remains locked when they're not there? So it's only to protect the investment people from being a hanging on. We wouldn't want to encourage that.
Of course not.
And this was brought forward by a member of the public. I just wanted to run it by the Board to make sure that I understood things correctly. And when I reviewed the action of this board, the renewal of the lease last time was unanimous. And I would think that we would almost want to offer a longer period lease, since those clubs are such a great steward of that property for the county.
I'll follow up on a couple of things you noted. The stone is down around the parking space, that was, is done, and today they're actually planting trees along the beat-up right away.
Okay.
We talked about that in adopting the resolution, so making a lot of progress with the park.
Motion made in second.
That's also, I mean, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we all remember the comprehensive plan together last week, which I think was incredibly beneficial. And then we had several public hearings, not public hearings, but preliminary hearings that were noted in the zoning administrators' report. And then the only, I thought oddity of the meeting was that with the extension of the time period for the cell towers, that CWS did not come to that meeting, which was, I thought unfortunate, in that, you know, we gave the extension, you know, to us on the details of the applications, and then the applicant was not meeting. So I'm hoping that they will make an appearance at the upcoming meeting, we'll be able to move those applications along.
I guess, Ms. McCreary contacted me, having read something in the paper about disappointment that they weren't at the meeting, and she apologized. And she said that they are working on written, submitted, to be provided for the next Planning Commission meeting. And I suggested that that ought to be provided at least a week before the meeting, and that she will be at the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you. All my action.
Rules Committee, please.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman. Yeah. As you know, the Rules Committee did not immediately were awaiting any potential consideration that the Board may have about the items that are on whole business, the standard policy for appointment, board meeting layout, the finance committee charter. And I heard no feedback, so I imagine that it was sufficient with the, with the forms that Mr. Currie proposes for the appointment process. I guess we'll, we'll give it a imagine in the very next discussion, but I agree, I have no feedback.
The one thing that was left on my plate for the Rules Committee is to draft the policy for electronic meeting participation. Not done that yet.
Clearly, I don't have that kind of meeting either, so.
All right, double digits. Jane one.
Well, speaking of the proposed policy for appointments that came out of the Rules Committee, this item was on your agenda at your last meeting, is provided again for consideration. At your last meeting, I was asked to prepare forms for use. If you recall, the policy has separate forms for reappointment and for initial appointment. Those proposed forms, forms are attached. Noteworthy on those forms is there are two-page forms with private information on the second page, phone numbers and things like that. Our current forms are not very graceful in that area, so I thought it might be appropriate to do that. I also, let's see, I think I corrected one error in the policy. I added section H after a discussion at the last meeting, situations that are not typical. And so basically, we gave the Board an out through a vote to suspend this, the rules of this policy if something is irregular, and somebody submits an application right before a meeting, or something like that, so that you have that opportunity. So the Board observes the right to waive all listed policies and procedures that deemed appropriate by majority of the Board. By due, we made motion second and vote during the properly advertised public meeting. So that way, you're telling the public the process you intend to follow, however, if needed, you could vote to suspend those rules if needed. Like last month, when you had an application right before the meeting, that wouldn't meet the requirements of the policy.
Right, we could write that.
Yeah. You could do it anyway, but it would essentially be changing the policy now it's incorporated into the policy that that's a procedure.
This is just reflective of the uncertainty, so a few weeks or so.
Correct. So if the Board has a mind to move forward with this policy, you can do so by motion. I will note that, further to the email, in talking with, meeting with the Library Board, there was some concern about the positions, the folks that were appointed to the Library Board recently to fulfill the remaining term of somebody who resigned, that we would be, the Board would be advertising those terms even though they've only been ceded for a year, and that is how the policy reads. If any positions on the Library Board, Planning Commission, Water, or Authority, Rep Authority would be advertised automatically. Now, adding this section H, the Board could vote to not do that if you wanted to.
I would place item J1, standard policy for appointments, in the form of a motion for approval.
Motion seconded.
Motion made in second. All those who think that say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name. Motion here. Extended policy for board meeting agenda layout.
Yes, next on your agenda is the, the other standard policy that came out of the Rules Committee regarding how board meeting agendas are laid out, as far as the order of items, incorporation of consent agenda, incorporation of a matter presented by the Board, and then inclusion of the, the policy that adjournment meetings at 11:00 and 11:00 p.m., unless they're extended by action of the Board. This is the policy that had an error. One of the subsections was inburned in the number 810 rather than 820. Tell which one I worked on first. Happy to answer any other questions. That's the only change to this from last month.
I think we, as the Board, it's pleasure, I can make the motion that we, I suppose this, this we can maybe discuss if we get a second.
I have a second for purposes of discussion. I have some questions about the automatic adjournment.
So this is basically what we're doing now.
It's very similar to what you're doing now. Move some items around a little bit, pushing the reports for the finance and things like that towards the end of the meeting, when I'm sure the public is interested in it, but it's not the core of what the public is interested in. It provides the consent agenda, an opportunity to pull items off the consent agenda, and then it adds the, kind of the catch- And then it adds the, kind of the catch-all matters presented by the board, but overall, it's very similar. There is a significant difference in the automatic adjournment. That can be included or not. And as I noted, in my tenure of attending meetings, when policies such as this has been included, the board voted to extend every single time.
So, I mean, for, under this rule, I could make a motion to adjourn like right now?
Well, a motion to adjourn is always in order, so. And if you had a majority, were adjourned, and you have a number of business items that wouldn't be taken care of. And in practicality, what this does is it calls attention to the board that the hour is late, and it forces you to make an affirmative decision to continue and really think about what's left on the agenda and whether it needs to be done tonight or perhaps tomorrow or a day long ago. And you, at that point in time, you would probably consider continuing to another day if it's late, or if there's only a few more things to do, just push through. Like I said, in practice, I've seen it almost always voted in to extend.
But once 11, let's just say 11:00 p.m. rolls around at night, and we're, you know, and we're automatically going to adjourn at 11:00, unless one of us makes a motion to continue before, correct?
Before 11:00. The secondary value, and perhaps of limited value, is that if for some reason you forgot to adjourn a meeting, your meeting is adjourned.
Oh, so if we adjourn, if we, well, we adjourn at 9:00 o'clock, go home, go to bed, and the clock rolls around and adjourn.
Yeah.
I have a motion at the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I will be closer on this, but the, just the planning consent agenda, how does one fit into this?
Right, so under item B, and I read it out last time, but essentially, items that are likely approvable without significant discussion would be placed under the consent agenda, and there are items pre-ranged, the minutes, count table, supplemental appropriations, contingency process, and other things, like tonight, we have the annual health department agreement, which is the same wording every year, and it aligns exactly with what you already put in your budget. That could be approved by one vote by the board of the consent agents. However, if the supplemental appropriations included one that was confusing or controversial, one board member could ask that it be removed, and once that's done, it is removed, and it'd be considered legal.
Or number does not need a second.
Does not need a second.
Right, so take this agenda we have today, and let's just say we've had this consent agenda in place, how would that change the, how would the appearance of this agenda?
Well, it's included under item A, it's on the board right now. You can see the order, we should, we called the meeting to order, it seems you normally do, adopt the agenda of having four boards, public comment, and then you'd have the consent agenda. That would be.
One, two, three, and four, five.
Those are on this one. And so it would be, Mr. Parrish would say, move approval of the consent agenda presented, some of these seconds, it's approved, and that has the action of voting on each one of those items. If there's a resolution, it would have the action of voting on that resolution, so. And then you roll into presentations, appointments, old business, new business, your information reports and correspondence, which will include the treasurer's report, my report, staff reports, any other information that comes along. Again, that's later in the agenda. Then the new item, that was presented by the board, which is really just an opportunity for any board member to bring something up for consideration at a future meeting, or perhaps to, to ask their fellow board members if they've heard certain things from the public, if you will recess, have a closed meeting if one is scheduled.
So if we try this for a few months, and if the consent agenda just doesn't seem to work out, we can go back to the old way if we went to the right.
Yeah, and so you would do that by adopting the revised policy. This was approved by a motion, you would refer to the new policy, and approved by motion.
Well, we can, and we discussed last night, if we'll just make our, any declarations we need to make, we would just make, when we approve the consent agenda.
Right, just, so, for example, today, if there's a Walker gentleman's payment for $682 on the next agenda, then you would make that declaration before, before taking that action.
With the ability of consent agenda, the one member being able to pull an item out that we have questions with, like, we have a correction to the minutes that we just, last minute type of thing, one of us come up with, so we could pull that out, so.
Okay, I get it.
It may, it may speed things along, we may try to, they find us on the first one to come.
If every meeting we're pulling everything off, yeah.
Well, then we'll try. Yeah, I want the minutes, he'll want something else, somebody can play a question, and we may wind up blowing it all apart.
But it seems like even, even if we just had a question, if we had a motion in the second, you could then have a discussion, just to clarify how it would necessarily interest in pulling off.
It's not intended to have in-depth discussion, but, and it's not very, it's not unusual for an item to be pulled off the consent agenda. Even if it's just for a two-minute discussion, to make sure you really understand what you're about to vote for, pull it off, you get that two-minute discussion, and then you, someone puts a motion, and that, that item is approved. So, next meeting, your agenda will be set up that way.
All right.
If you recall, at the last meeting, the board discussed this resolution, charter resolution that came out of the Rules Committee, and we discussed the timing of this. It doesn't really make sense to adopt it before, definitely before the elections, because this calls for the appointment of three individuals, two primary representatives and one alternate, and kind of hard to do that if you don't have, who's going to be here next year. The board could decide to adopt this in January, never, in December, but it's, hasn't changed at all since it was brought to the last meeting, so I'll leave it for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Could you appoint someone, knowing that their supervisor elect and they haven't taken the oath yet, or they haven't actually been seated?
I don't see why he couldn't. Their appointment would be effective January 1.
Right.
January 3, or whatever date here, or meeting's on the second, I think, so they're probably sworn in on the first or second. I bet you would, I mean, you would want to know that that person's interested.
Well, yeah. That'd be valuable, if they weren't here.
Well, the future board could choose to pass a resolution that supersedes this resolution, so it's only as good as the last vote of the resolution in the last floor. Can't find a future board.
I'd be glad to, I'd like to see this again on the next ones again, because, okay, the rest of the board.
Perfect.
Mr. Curry.
Solid ways. You got many solid ways.
Give you an update of where we were relative to our refuse in recycling centers last meeting. Since that time, I have met with Updike, I've met with Page County representatives twice, and received an unsolicited proposal from a local vendor. I'm still waiting for a proposal from Updike based on their Madison contract. I'm surprised that it's taking so long. Right now, relative, I have not received any operational costs from potential arrangements with Page County. So without knowing that, it's hard to say whether that's viable or not. That's key. It would require capital cost, so in the form of compactors and containers, both for waste and recycling. All the containers we use now at our centers are owned by efficiency, an Updike company, and they're pretty old, I don't think we'd have any interest in buying them, so we'd be looking at buying new containers. So capital cost could easily be $200,000 for compactors and containers, and then some cycle, and electrical work. The big question is, what is the operational cost savings? And through whatever avenue, say, Paige or not Paige, if we have owned containers, we can hire anybody at all, including a local vendor. If that operational savings is $100,000 a year, then a $200,000 capital cost doesn't sound too bad. Sounds pretty good. So I'm working with Ms. Nick right now to review our overall position, to be comfortable with what capital you have to put to bear for this solution. And then between that, and eventually getting operational costs nailed down, I'll be in a position to provide a few different alternatives to the board to make some decisions, hopefully at your next meeting.
Unless we continue with the negotiations we have, Updike wants the capital, falls their contract in.
Well, the, I would argue, the system we have in place now is.
Very inefficient.
Yes, well, it's very inefficient for many different factors. It will probably get a four to one compaction ratio, so you, obviously, you could cut your hole in a quarter from what it is today with these 30-yard containers, but the, and the containers hold, are great volume, the 40-yard containers, so. I think that's all.
We're being charged by the trip, the haul, and we're being charged by the time it's taken. Is that correct?
Correct, and.
And I'm asking you a question so that.
Yes, and, and we have not come to terms with Updike on what the billing scenario is today, with six or eight 30-yard containers at each center. Keep asking for it. They're, they're providing and hauling them, so they don't really have much leverage when they send me a bill, but I still want to come to terms with what we agree is acceptable. Historically, we did not pay for hauling the 30-yard containers when their boom truck was down, because that was their problem. But this is kind of a different scenario, and it really can't be expected to, to eat that cost for months. And the lead time for this sort of thing is, is going to be a few months to get this equipment, if this is the route we want to go, or whatever else we do. So that's what I can offer at this time. I still believe that there is opportunity to reduce the hours that the Amosville site is open, to bring it closer to what Flatwood is, and I do believe that whatever we end up with, with this transition, now's the time to be thinking about whether we want to change validation of waste coming into the center and changing the deal with Culpeper, where we take each other's waste. We'll consider that.
I can see changes to policy, but I've got a DVD pickup, I saw on the ditch the other day and forgot about it. Closing the, changing the hours is going to create more of that.
Well, we have, Amosville's closed one day a week, and Flatwood's closed two days a week, and it seems to me we probably have them both closed two days a week, and not, for example, if Amosville was closed on Wednesday, I don't know that's earth-shattering, because if Flatwood would be. But that's something the board can talk about.
Well, it's now just on Sunday, maybe we set off again.
Correct. Just on Sunday right now, yeah.
I've heard that the containers have been very full. Is, or do you feel like we're taking, I mean, is it two a day that you're pulling out and bringing in two fresh ones every day? Does that need to be more free, more capacity or frequency?
It's a bone of contention with Updike, and, yeah, I don't know what their abilities are or aren't, and their solution's been to deliver more containers, because they, they're unable to schedule. We've started sending them information at close of every shift, on how many containers are full, so that I don't have to hear them say they didn't know.
Okay, I appreciate that. Because I, I mean, that's the feedback that I've gotten from you.
It's our goal to have at least one container with the door open all the time. And at Amosville, that's a little bit easier, because we have the tractor there, and he can use that to manipulate the waste a little bit, so that there's not the high lift height. Because I told a citizen who asked me, if you have to, citizen has to drop off waste, and there's not an attendant available immediately to help you, and there's not a container with the door open, just sit on the ground next to the container, we'll take care of. Hopefully, there is a container with the door open somewhere, and you just, if there's eight of them, like at Flatwood, you just can't identify which one that is.
Is there a way, a flag, which one is, is walk-in?
Probably.
Make that visible, like on the front end, that might be helpful to people, so they don't have to go looking, and they're, they're not trying to get us back in the front of the bus.
Yeah.
That would be very helpful, I'd say.
Since we have a little tractor here, and town has one also nearly the same size, would you leave?
I don't know that the little one here is.
If we push the trash up in here?
Yes, I mean, you got to get up in, in the box, so it's a little sketchy at Amosville. Wouldn't want to do it with a smaller tractor. Wouldn't want to do that at all. We shouldn't have to do that, so.
Fair enough.
The goal is to move beyond this, and so it is inconvenient, we're giving it rest to make it as, at least inconvenient as possible. With any luck, we'll exit this and save money.
Name is Philip Powell. Lease with me?
Struggle as I may, still do not have a lease to attend to or with SBA. Imagine being here to deal with the federal government, I don't know. As I told you before, I think I reported it accurately before, that they said the price was $5,000 a month, or $2,000 a month, but they would give us a deal for $1,000 a month for the ground space. I finally got a price from them, if we moved for the propane tank in the long and large spark radius of it out of the area of $750 a month, so it's very nice of them to say. So I went back to them and said, okay, I just want a three-foot square concrete pad, you put it anywhere you want, and you just need to go from there to the tower, and two conduits from there out of the compound. And I made contact with them today, finally, they responded, and we'll see what they say for that. There's, we can't go any smaller for the footprint than that. The RF cable should be as close to the tower as we can, you don't really want to route them two feet. That's all I've got.
Name of the contract?
As you recall, at the last meeting, I gave Harris a deadline, like the 18th, to provide me with their response. They begged to meet with me instead. They met with me the next Monday, and pretty much said that their numbers, their number. I had told them I wanted clarity to what that value was and what they got that day, and they said they would provide it. So I'm not waiting around for them. The change order to the contract that was already adopted out of the construction design review process included these two concrete pads for $12,510 a piece. I did get them to confirm to me that if I do that work, then I get $12,000 credit in the contract. That seemed like a good trade. I'm looking for contractors. Have talked with CWS on the contractors that they have used and know in the area, and the ones that worked on that site for the grounding, et cetera. So it put me to a couple contractors to talk to. I'm working to get costs for generator propane. It looks like, right now, in a business slash industrial quality generator, which is 20kw, it's about $19,000 a site for generator and propane, propane installed generator, drop shipped to the site. So the pieces are starting to come together. I can't imagine them adding up to $150,000 a site.
I can't imagine them adding up to $150,000 a site. But unfortunately, I don't have a conclusion at this point. I did talk to Harris about an interim, assuming the 800-megahertz system moves forward, goes live in the coming months. I talked to him about a transition period where we would keep our low-band paging online and connect to it, and then bring the VHF paging system up whenever we were ready with that. And so they, they think that that won't be a problem. Nonetheless, we want to move this along as quickly as possible. Have a meeting scheduled in a couple weeks to discuss cutover planning, what needs to be done, what remains necessary, what is required of us and the other partners to get the 800 megahertz done. We have two new project managers on this project for Harris, and they seem to be keeping some momentum towards actually completing the project, the 800 megahertz. Happy to try and answer any questions. The meeting packet has an update for the, update on legal matters. Did see that there appears to be discovery depositions planned for BRAG I on November 20th.
Right.
BRAG II appears still nothing going on. I haven't heard anything about SONAT to change. Capielli, as you're aware, is now the one remaining charged for long-term. Capielli is related to the storage of equipment that is not accessory to their current use and is potentially acceptable if they get this special exception that will be before the planning commission for public hearing at their next meeting. Ground cases moving forward. Mr. Mitchell, or, not Mr. Mitchell, the, can't remember the counsel's name.
I can't either.
Simone is the lawyer. As you can read, the Frazier case appears to be, the preliminary motion's here in this room on December 5th at 9:00 AM.
That's right.
And then Harmony Manor, the D and D, that appeal, Mr. Mitchell submitted a response on behalf of the board based on your discussion at your last meeting during the close meeting. I'm sure Mr. Goff didn't add anything to the question.
So what's happening with the BRAG I on the plan?
That is the deposition date. We're going to take Mr. Frazier's deposition on that date at the offices of my brand here in town. And that's not a public thing, that's a private thing.
Except for us.
No, we're, I'm going to be, I'll contact the other board members this week to see your availability for other dates. Mr. Conick has requested that we get deposition date scheduled for the rest of the meeting. Any other witnesses, including Ms. Kaiser.
There's a lot of cases. Too many. Yep, new business.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier, for coming.
The board adopted a similar agreement last October. This agreement is for FY '20. Four months into the year, we finally get the agreement from the state that it's about par for the course. The agreement required includes the financial commitment that is already included in your adopted FY '20 budget, and as noted earlier, this is the sort of thing that would be on your consent agenda in the future, or if you have it today. But I do need, what I'm asking for is authorization for me to execute the agreement on behalf of the board.
Is it the same agreement as last year? Are there changes?
Yeah, it's essentially, the other thing it does, it allows them to carry forward, I believe, $31 in unused funds from last year. $31.76, so that number would have been different last year. And the budget amount of 118, 118,496 is slightly different than last year.
But the legal language is similar.
Right. And as you can see at the very end, it is approved as before by the Office of the Attorney General, and Mr. Goff has approved it as well.
I'm moved to approve.
And moving to authorize me to execute?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those opposed, say aye. All opposed, nay. Looking here. I guess you're going to do it.
All right. Next is an item that was brought forward by Commission Revenue, Mary Graham. In reviewing our ordinance, she identified a section that requires modification. It's really not critically consequential, and it doesn't change process. However, the ordinance, which I will bring up in front of you, currently references the CPIU for the Washington-Baltimore metropolitan area. That area is no longer a CPIU region as of the end of 2018, and the new region is the Washington-Arlington-Alexandria CPIU region. So she requested that the board amend the ordinance to recognize the new name. And discussing this with Mr. Goff and asking, is there a way we can work this so that we don't have to do this again when Harris P. decides to change CPIU region? He suggested we tap on that the Washington-Arlington-Alexandria area CPIU shall be used, or other such CPIU as from time to time may be redesignated or renamed. So that is the Commission Revenue, the opportunity to actually select the appropriate one for this one test, not a four test for tax relief for the elderly and disabled. What I'm asking of the board today is to authorize me to advertise this for public hearing. It is an ordinance amendment, so it requires public hearing, advertisement in the newspaper, and I'm asking you to authorize me to do that at your next meeting. The ordinance language is in the packet. That's pretty straightforward. The public hearing ad is also in the packet, and it's also rather straightforward.
That's going to be for public hearing at next meeting?
Public hearing December 2nd. December 2nd.
I would make the motion to authorize you to advertise for the ordinance amendment for a public hearing at the December regular meeting, as included in the packet.
Second.
Mr. Look, look, nay, in second. All of those, say aye. All opposed, nay. Looking here. Change.
Yes, this is the item requested first by Mr. Frazier, requesting a resolution be prepared for consideration of board recognizing the life and passing of H.B. Wood Jr., former board member. See, resolution attached, and as you amended your agenda beginning, if you approve this resolution in the current form, I have it with me here for board members to sign. If you modify it, I'll modify it and have you sign it tonight so that you can present it to the panel of H.B. Wood proceeding.
I did have somebody point out that HB should be two initials, you know, H for Henry and B for Barnes. It should be H dot, B dot, period.
Right.
It'd be the two places. First line, the, but three lines, first three lines.
First where is, I see that, second where is. So if otherwise it's acceptable, the board should approve it as amended, and I can make those changes available for signature on the show before your 7 o'clock.
I would place it as a doubtful for, for the motion. Sorry. Should be roll call vote, please. Motion made in second. Roll call vote. Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
Ms. Flitt.
Aye.
Ms. Parrish.
Aye.
Can I, can I show you? Is that right?
Yes. We moved out of...
The demo, the demo.
Telephone, landline, standing item, no issues reported for Verizon. Two static outage issues with rain continuing for central links. I know at least one of those was in Harris Hollow. Just a recurring issue. Radio system, we talked about that. The meeting that I noted is on November 19th for cutover. Electrical work, Mr. Frazier brought up earlier. Mr. Frazier and I met on site to look and try to trace some circuits, and then again with Mr. Jenkins, and then I need to be able to visit the site one more time to trace circuits so our engineer can get the plans finalized. I received a 75% set of plans seven weeks ago, and I have now a 90% set in my office right now, just waiting for the circuit IDs. I have a quote, a national contract quote for the generator, and ATS for the sheriff's office, and the new ATS for the primary generator, and incorporating surge protection and another surge protection device for the tower building. And all of that comes to $49,000. So I believe that's fairly well ahead of the projection. I'm fine-tuning that, and I'll get with Mr. Frazier when I'm sure the engineer signs off on all that, so we can get it ordered, because there will be a bit of a lead timeline on the generator. Any other questions on electrical? Social services lobby, vestable, vestable project, I told you before that the design was done, and that permit's ready to issue. We're just tracking down the right person to sign, because it's not a county bill, but that's ready to issue. Reported to the board by email that Kevin Wayans and I participated in a group from the Volunteer Rescue, Fire and Rescue Association, visited Madison and Page to discuss with them their transition from all volunteer rescue to page rescue, and anticipation of some future transition here in Rappahannock, trying to get up to speed on what went well and what didn't go well, so that here we're ready to make some recommendations for this community at some point in time in the future. And I don't believe it's imminent, but leave that up to the volunteer agencies to let us know. We're looking for other stations that may make sense, if any board members know of companies, localities that would be good to look at, please let myself know, or Mr. Bevout, who's chairing this committee. Space needs unfortunately continues to take a backseat to waste management, radio upgrades, and auto upgrades, and I haven't touched it. Nothing I can say more than that. Told you before that obviously we had the jail boiler upset and received just under $10,000 in insurance from that. Got quotes, we could replace it for about $10,000 with a light oil burner. We could replace it with a high-efficiency propane for about $15,000. We could kick the can down the road a while and put in some temporary electric heat for negligible dollars. Doing some quick math, between the 85% efficient oil boiler and 98% efficient propane boiler, it only nets you $300 to $400 savings a year for what our needs are. So I've asked our maintenance contractor if there would be any significant annual maintenance savings for going to propane from oil, but $300 to $400 a year, it's going to take too long to make back that five grand, so I don't see why we would do that. Not knowing exactly what the entirety of the jail is going to be used for, I'm inclined to suggest that we wait a year and just use some electric heat that we pay about, say, $900, well, $1,300 a year in heating oil fuel on average. So I think for $1,500 or $1,600, we could probably heat it with electric for the short term until we know more about the future of that. So save the $10,000 we got from insurance, keep it in our fund balance, make sure the pipes don't freeze, it's really not an occupied space. And then when we know what the future of the facility is, then we can decide what the best form of heat is, and if we need quality cooling at the same time, then perform that decision. If the board members have any suggestions, we'll put on that behind it here.
I mean, the fact, the reason that we went for the space planning is so we could address everything at one time, so it does seem like it would be wise, so we can work through that as a complete plan, instead of doing something piecemeal that may not be a good fit down the road.
It would be very unfortunate for us to install one of these blowers and find out we don't want to use for years. At least I hear great objection when we move in that direction. Next, I learned earlier today that, as you heard earlier, RAPC, CPI, did receive their SCH EV certification late on October 24th, so they are official, which is really good news for our community and greater opportunities for our citizens to get certified credential training.
Good healthcare designation.
Well, it's a state, I'll never get it right. State Council of Higher Education. Ford, Virginia, SCH EV. So you can't call yourself a university, or, that's why they had some issues with Grand U. This group handles all that credentialing. So by getting this designation, they are now eligible to actually hold some of these healthcare courses and whatnot. Good time for our schools. Then, last year, I was very excited to tell you that our FY 2018 audit was going to be on time by the end of November, then we had a slip at the end, and we didn't get it done. It will be done this year. I talked to the auditor today, and he assured me that we are, it will be done by the end of this month. It will be on the December agenda for your review approval, and that can very likely be the first time ever, and that's, that's good. Then I informed the board previously that I'd hoped to have on this agenda, and I'm asking for you to authorize me to have a budget public hearing in December to amend the budget because we were exceeding the 1%, and that included carrying over from FY 19, that $277,000 for the radio system, the last payment to Harris that we keep carrying along until they finish the project, and a few other things to include, the school carryover. I was getting to 11:00 hour, and I had some questions... I was getting to eleven hour and I had some questions about the school carryover, so I decided to push that a month. Doesn't really cause any operational concerns, but throws in a lap of a new board who just is where it is. It's not very, it is, it's just a perfunctory matter that we need to take care of, but that's why it's not on this agenda. You will see the draft on the December agenda requesting authorization to advertise in June. And that's all I have on my.
And now the October, what do we, the October appropriation, it's not going to be the January appropriation.
The schools included, most of them in the original budget. So they, they fine tuned their initial act budget, federal, state, local, other. And so this is just a true up. Part of that is a portion of the PATH grant, commit to be fit funds that they received during nineteen but didn't expend, fell back to the general fund at the end of the fiscal years will be reported in the, the annual financial work audit. So it just needed that all to gel before it pushed back over to them. But yes, you're right. Any other questions? It's very quiet in here.
Information and correspondence?
Yes, board members may recall last year about this time, we received correspondence from the state regarding the gypsy moth suppression program. That didn't make sense for the county to be involved with that program then. I believe it continues to not make any sense for us to be involved, but I wanted to make sure that you saw this correspondence that came in from the state. There are two programming notices from Comcast that I shared with you in the public, eager to which it seems very critical, that they are required to pass along to us. You then have your building permit report, which interestingly, if you look at that, just over two million dollars in permit in construction listed on that report. That's, it's not bad. If that's actually.
It's consistent with last year.
If it's captured, and every month it's a little bit different, but when it's a big note catches my eye, so that's, you know, fifteen grand if it's captured in assessment, we'll take it. Designing reports, Ms. Smith referred to earlier. And VDOT monthly report. This is the last item on your agenda for your recess.
You need a holiday?
No, you just need.
Oh, recess. Everything else. Those times we. So I have the honor of attending, having this resolution. And I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas the passing of Henry Barnett, H.B. Wood Jr. on Saturday, October nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, dealt his community a great loss and the pride of this court of a friend and former member. Whereas H.B., graduate of Sperryville High School, was a local farmer, orchardist and businessman in his lifelong home of Rappahannock County and served on the board supervisors for twelve years. And whereas the board supervisors acknowledges and greatly appreciates the years of public service H.B. dedicated to the county of Rappahannock. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board supervisors of Rappahannock County mourns the passing of our friend and former member, Henry Barnett Wood Jr. Wishes to formally extend his sympathies to his family for their loss and add further extents those sympathies to his friends and colleagues and our community who feel it keenly as well. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the minute book of the board supervisors of Rappahannock County and then a presentation copy be provided to the family of Henry Barnett Wood Jr. with suitable ceremony and expressions of the board supervisors' members of deep and abiding respect. So it is a great honor maybe to, to present this. Knew H.B. for many, many years and he was in a way a good mentor to me and always enjoyed coming to his home and visiting him and his wife. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to present this to y'all. So I'm not sure. Anything? We're ready to begin.
And don't think because H.B. would have a statement in the meeting, you have a statement.
He probably would say, now go save us some money.
Okay, next item on your agenda is a rezoning public hearing, RC number nineteen zero eight oh one. This is for tax map parcel number thirty-eight thirty-one located in Sperryville area. And the summoners is here, I'm sure providing introduction and opportunity for the applicant to say a few words.
If I could, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chairman, at this time I would recuse myself of this agenda item due to a family member's relationship with the applicant. Thank you.
Graham, is it?
Thank you for that introduction. The purpose of this rezoning is still allowed for permitted uses not currently permitted in the RF five zoning district, which is property is located in. It's located at non-Josh Ben Lane in Sperryville, the Piedmont District. Again, the applicant is seeking a use which is not currently in the RF five district, including a winery located within Estes Mill, which has already obtained approval for a dulcimer museum. Mr. Hallberg has proposed proffers which restrict certain by rate uses in the highway commercial zoning district. And in my staff report, I've listed the uses that he has proffered out and the uses that still remain. The planning commission held a public hearing to consider rezoning, this rezoning request at the regular September eighteenth meeting. Following the public hearing, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the requested rezoning. The property does join the highway commercial zoning district as well as, as well as property that is zoned industrial and residential role. If the board is inclined to approve this request, a draft ordinance for adoption has been prepared. In accordance with local and state code, if the board is inclined to deny this request, a denial resolution has been prepared. Making a decision, the board of supervisors shall base considerations on the code RCC section one seventy dash one thirty-four J. A staff report, proposed proffers, application, the planning commission vote sheets have been provided to each of you all. The planning commission recommended approval with the proffers by a vote of five to one following a public hearing, again at their September eighteenth meeting. Proffers can be offered by the applicant and accepted by the board supervisors of the code pursuant to one seventy dash thirty-four B one. The health department commented that the septic is on Sperryville septic and of the water and sewer authority, the department of drinking water will oversee the water source and testing. The Rappahannock, the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority commented that the Sperryville wastewater treatment plant has a capacity for the additional use. They wish you a permit allowing conditions and specific terms. VDOT comment by letter dated September thirtieth, which was in packets with concerns regarding traffic volume and entrance. They requested the applicant submit a total daily traffic volume estimate for Josh Ben Lane. Currently, the applicant has been working with VDOT for the information they have requested. This public hearing was properly advertised for two consecutive weeks. The applicant is present with his attorney, Mr. Brown. If anybody has any questions for me?
I do. Could you repeat that?
Okay.
Look, could you tell, tell us why there was the one neighbor? Did they voice their concern?
Not that I recall at this time.
I didn't, I didn't remember, I didn't even remember hearing that.
I was there, it was MK, MK issue. And I think there was just general concern for not necessarily this use, but the potential remaining uses that are not removed by property. You take a look at the staff report, it lists all the remaining uses allowable by right. And I think there's some general concern. Unlike a special exception that may have a sunset date or something like that, a rezoning is fixable and forever. But that was a minority opinion on the planning.
I believe she also expressed, or had a question as to maybe why this wasn't an adaptive use as opposed to a rezoning? That was actually something that I was going to ask today, so maybe I, I don't know if you got a thought on that, but I could ask the applicant, I suppose. That way.
It's a big question.
And the applicant was steered in this direction by a planning commission member.
And Ms. Smith, she also had a concern about the, about the traffic on that road.
Is the applicant, one of the.
Should I step up, please?
Yes, please.
I'm feeling under the weather, so trying not to breathe all over the microphone too much. John Hallberg, the master district, I think one of the things that people about had to do with whether we can actually. I am, I'm kind of fog brained, like I said, because I'm under the weather right now. Had to do with whether we can do a, a commercial winery there or not. So we're planning on doing the, the actual pressing of the juice over at another facility, which is the old Elmer's Press. And then we're just going to be doing the fermenting at the Estes Mill. So again, I'm going to have a whole lot prepared and I'm feeling really bad, I've been feeling bad most of the day today. So if I ask you guys, if you knew what a dulcimer was, I'm sure everybody in the room would probably say it's an hourglass thing or a boat shaped thing, but just give you a little, little quick one-on-one about this. This is actually the instrument that, you can see straight sided instrument, it's called a scheicholtz. It's a German, German instrument that the mountain dulcimer evolved from. So one thing that I like about the dulcimers that are kind of, dulcimer's history is that it dovetails well with American history. So the summer Arabian scheicholtz, so the Moravians were a German sect that was persecuted over in Germany. There's actually a catalog of Pretoria, it's fifteen, the fifteen hundreds in Germany that shows this instrument, clearly calls it scheicholtz. So these instruments actually have been found all over Appalachia because what, what happened was the Germans came over to eastern Pennsylvania and then the great, the great wilderness was the Virginia, the Virginia wagon road, the Philadelphian wagon road down in Virginia. This one was actually found down near, near Western Salem. So again, with American history, dovetailing well with American history, the great wagon road split at Roanoke, which was actually called Big Lick, until about fifty years ago. So at Big Lick, there was three, three splits, one down toward eventually Georgia, but down toward Western Salem, one toward Tennessee and one with Daniel Boone's track over to use and cover the gap. So this, if you think of this instrument then shrinking down and being actually just the fretboard on an instrument, then if you had a box underneath it that was either boat shaped or hourglass shaped, that's when the dulcimer actually became. So this is probably seventeen hundreds and it's late seventeen hundreds and this is one of the real kind of critters that I, that I seek when I go out on my tracks into Appalachia. So. I'll leave that there if anybody wants to look at it for a few minutes, but the other thing I, I don't want to. Show you guys, I remember Alan Henry was talking about, you know, the uses for the property and, you know, you might think about all sorts of uses there, you know, were you thinking about cider last year? And I immediately would say yes, and I guess I have to, you know, put an asterisk on that. When we were originally clearing the mill, one thing that we found was this, I don't know if you can read it, it says Alvar Marle Pippin on it. You guys probably know Pippin, the name Pippin, it's a famous, famous apple. And Alvar Marle Pippins were actually so famous that the Queen of England had them brought back to England, had them imported from here to England. So, you know, when we were cleaning it up, again, you just having to eat this piffing, this epiphany, that that is another thing that I could do to legitimize this business. People like cider, I've done cider professionally, it was like a dub only. So that was kind of the, the impetus on how, how that, you know, all kind of evolved. But so again, you know, I'm, you know, I'm kind of under the weather and I'm, so that's, that's all I really have for you. If you have any questions for me, Michael Brown, I think you'd like to follow me up, but yeah, like I said, I'd better get this thing set.
Mr. Chairman, I may, members of the board, Michael Brown, on behalf of the applicant, just to answer a few of the, actually turn my hearing aids down. Just to answer a couple of the questions that were, I wanted to address Mr. Lozinski's question specifically on the question about adaptive reuse, that was a concept that we batted around for a bit. When Mr. Hallberg first came to me though, he had already been before the planning commission on, on one occasion already, I think it was Mr. Curry or you two. There were a couple of members at the planning commission who actually steered him in the direction of doing a rezoning. If, if we can bring up the zoning map that's part of the board docs materials. And as we looked at, I consulted with Mr. Hallberg, this, this property seemed to be just a, a perfect candidate for a, a rezoning. As you see there, the parcel is involved, I'll point to it for you. Thirty-one years, it's going to show by the era. You'll see that to the east, the property is coming all the way up to it. On the eastern verge of it is already highly commercial and of course, all of the members of the board are totally familiar with that stretch of two-eleven going down to the former river there, Experian. Coming up to the western side though, what a lot of folks aren't aware of, this is, it's unusual in this respect, is that the property is bound on the western side by some of the only industrialies owned property in the county. As we all know, we don't have many of those parcels here in Rappahannock.
So Mike, is that, I want to interrupt, is that the one that got the glass gone factory?
It is, it's part of the, the glassworks of property, the commerce property. So when, as we were looking at it, you've got this little tail end of rural residential that comes down there and kind of cuts off the highway commercial and the industrial. And this property, even though it doesn't technically a verge on Route two-eleven, the way the, the river comes in there, it does come right up there, again, I'm sure you're all familiar with that intersection, where the, where the highway and the river come together, that's where the, it was, I guess, historically the natural location for a mill, that's where the Estes Mill is. So as we looked at it, this seemed to be truly a good candidate for a rezoning. But at the same time, you know, Mr. Hallberg is very conscious about the fact that if you look at the entire list of potentially permitted uses for highway commercial properties, there were, there were any number that were just, would not be appropriate for this property in general. And certainly in his view, as somebody who wants to protect and restore the property and preserve those historical elements of it, he uses that wouldn't be appropriate for this specific, the Estes Mill property, which he's very keen on supporting. And so for that reason, as Mr. Curry has pulled up, we've proffered away, it's about a page and a half of uses out of the zoning ordinance that could potentially be made for this property that now would be expressly prohibited. So it only leaves, I think it's about two dozen uses that seem to be possible property uses that would occur, if they're in Ms. Summer's staff report, that could possibly occur on this property in. on this property in the future. The only real outstanding item in terms of the materials that you have in your materials this evening is the letter that was obtained from VDOT. The one thing that I would ask and encourage the board members to keep in mind is that this is not a special permit application that you have before you. This is actually a rezoning request. And so the broader overarching question is, is a rezoning of the property appropriate? The VDOT letter, Mr. Holberg is in the process of addressing the requirements from Mr. Webb and his letter. We've got Mr. Park is finalizing a site, this is served on it. There will be whatever level of traffic study, VDOT believes is appropriate for this property. Those are all items that can be addressed in terms of the final plan for the property that can be addressed at the site plan. All of those items that are in Ms. Summers' report that she points out are still potentially permitted uses, whether through special permit or by right uses. Almost all of them, with a couple of exceptions, require site plan. They still require site plan approval. And so at that point, the zoning administrator still has the ability to have the applicant in providing that site plan for whatever use comes up in the future, to address questions, whether it'll be hope department questions, VDOT questions, anything of that nature. So that is something that will still be addressed and satisfied, or if it can be satisfied, then the applicant will ultimately receive the site plan approval that he needs ultimately for his use. So I just, I wanted to bring that out and be sure that the board members were aware of that. And we're happy to answer any other questions you want to hear.
A VDOT requires a transportation impact analysis when there's expected to be 5,000 additional trips per day for a rezoning. And this is not in that category.
No, I think, actually, I got some numbers from the Shenandoah National Park. They said 600,000 people come down, turn off the park, and go to Sperryburg for a year or so. Got to figure, the majority of them haven't happened in the last few months, so.
You certainly wouldn't have five thousand.
I got a question. I was wondering, in the event, if you have events, larger events, about the parking. I was over there today, looked around, and there's almost no parking there in front of the mill in South Creek. And then there's just a little bit up the road there. And I just can't imagine if you guys are ready for any bringing cars there to park.
It looks like to me that, I had done a grid in that area that we're talking about in between the mill on Josh Ben Lane and Glassworks. And it looks like there's just about 35 cars. I was thinking about 10 maybe in front of the mill. And then, you know, potentially, the fact that Josh Ben leads you back behind the Glass Gallery, I've got a good working relationship with Glass Gallery. I can't imagine they'd say, no, you can't park anybody back here. So I think, you know, certainly we don't want to have anybody parking on the other side of 211 crossing. That's actually one of VDOT's stipulations, but so, yeah.
So presumably Eric Givarnis still owns the Glassworks?
It's in his estate.
That's where he got it. Yeah, I forgot that.
So these matters would have to be incorporated into a site plan.
Right, because I'm a little concerned about, there's a right-of-way to reuse to get there. And so if you get all those cars, you know, you would probably end up blocking that.
You know, it's funny, I remember Christine, when she sold in place last year, saying, basically, keep it in your pocket. But she said, not every I and T was dotted in that right-of-way. So she said, that's kind of your pleasure. I again want to have a great relationship with them. And to tell the truth, there's only two or three people that work back there on the weekend. So I think, and you know, in that instance, I think they could potentially park up front. You know, but, so I think there is a workaround there.
We can't potentially, we have to have that as part of the site plan. Because you have to have X number of parking spots for the type of commercial concern that you're going to open. Did anybody suggest this earlier?
Not that I'm aware of.
When Mr. Holberg, it's not this matter being decided today. When Mr. Holberg went through the public hearing process for the approval for the dulcimer museum, there was a conversation about happening events. And there was some concern expressed at that time by the planning commission. And ultimately, they recommended approval of only the work internal to the museum and not any events, and then that carried through to the board. So there was some consideration of that before. Now for uses that are permitted by right in your zoning ordinance in 17036 that require a site plan, those, I believe those site plans are then administratively reviewed. And those that go through special exception, but then, or a special use permit would pass them through the bodies. So site plans still be required, it would just be reviewed administratively, if it's a by right use.
The proposed use, setting aside the question of the couple of events per year, the proposed use that Mr. Holberg envisioned, and he started working up some numbers on this, is truly a low-impact kind of use. I mean, the expected number of cars we're talking about on weekends are somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen, and maybe on weekends, 20 to 25. And so that, and of course, the parking is going to have to be shown and delegate on the site plan. I would suggest that this, we've got this question about literally a couple of events per year. The amount of parking that the property itself will accommodate is going to, is one of the things that's going to be a naturally limiting feature of the size of those events in the first place. If Mr. Parishew went out there, there's a, as you go down Josh Ben Lane, there is kind of an open field. Once you get past the mill, there's the houses, sort of sits up to the left. I mean, there is that sort of that open field back there. And this is a pretty good-sized property, it's a little over five acres. That field is part of this property. So that's where we envision the, that the parking would be accommodated for the event.
Are you talking about the field up above, on the other side of the house? Is it in random? Are you talking about just a little, I mean, it's, it's really not much bigger than this room right here.
No, there's a field that's beyond the house, in the way that Josh Ben, that's probably twice the size of this room.
Okay, and that's on the property.
Right, yeah, I saw that.
How does that driveway get protected to maintain access to that house? In other words.
And that actually loops around, there's actually a separate entrance to the house that is up further on.
Oh, okay, so you don't have to go up Josh Ben to go curb around there?
No.
So if the property is rezoned, then that runs with the land, correct?
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Holberg can sell it or...
And that's why those proffers are important. And that's, again, I, I think it's worth mentioning that, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Holberg, he's here, he can speak for himself. But that was one of the, one of the driving concerns in proffering away so many of those uses is the idea that, I think a lot of folks, and this came out, was expressly stated at the planning commission. A lot of folks are totally comfortable with John Holberg and sort of his love for the dulcimer and what he wants to do with that property and preserving it. It's the unknown owner, you know, whether it's decades from now or...
Well, that was the second half of my question, actually, was there's, is there any protection for the structure? There's no protection for the structure, right? I mean, if he sells it and they want to do something else, they can knock that down.
It's not built into the proffer or the zoning application. That is something that, there's been some discussion of separately. I, as a land use attorney, and someone who does conservation easement work, I would want Mr. Holberg to be able to reap the benefit of doing a conservation easement if he sought them to do that down the road. If we make it part of a zoning proffer, that's going to foreclose any economic benefit that he might otherwise gain from doing a conservation easement.
When I look at the boundary property, I think one of the things that scared some people away was that was a big scary barn, quote unquote, that may have to be knocked down. And you know, of course, I saw it, I was, oh my God, there's the mill. That's still kind of viable. And if I put, you know, what amounts to maybe a half a million dollars into the mill, I can't imagine anybody would want to tear it down ever. I can't imagine that anybody wouldn't think that it was a total benefit to the community, whatever was done with it. So, you know, we're doing it, you know, Joe Geiser, it's going to be high class, all of that.
But the problem, if you can remember back a couple of years, to blow up with the Tudors. Tudors was actually a grandfather's business, so we really couldn't dictate parking. But a lot of people were getting confused, they thought they could dictate parking. And parking was not on the same line as the property. So you're proposing to have a rezoning with some of the uses that would require parking on the same line? And you're telling us that you may be parking up there on a different line? At the Glassworks?
Not for any of the proposed, not for the proposed uses. That would, the only time that would be, would come into play would be in the context of those couple of events that might occur. And those are still sort of just hypothetical, hypothetical thinking.
Indeed. And you know, I might actually co-join with folks at the Glassworks Gallery if we did want to do some sort of Rappahannock Music Festival. Because if you guys remember the Rappahannock Music Festival, that Eric years ago was back behind the Glass Gallery. So, you know, just some of my thoughts.
So are we talking about these events as part of this package? Or this is something that you're going to be doing in the future? I mean, I think, we can't just address something you're really, you're asking for a rezon. And I think we need to have an idea of what we're actually talking about now and sometimes shortly in the future.
Okay. And I think, you know, the discussion of events is that if the property were rezoned and the proffers were accepted as proffered, carnival, field, party, fair, show, or musical festival for profit, temporary, would be permitted by right on this property. It's permitted by right in the HC zoning district. And it was not, it's not supposed to be removed by the current proffer. And that's why there's some discussion of it right now. They would still have to apply for it, submit the required documents, site plan to show.
Right, but if it's allowed by right, how many cars do you think he's imparting now? On the property? You're going to have a festival with 40 cars?
I guess, you know, what's in the definition? And he would have to apply for it.
We have to have the definitions if we're going to make those decisions tonight. That's where I'm at. It seems like we're...
Well, I think retail sales less than 5,000 square feet gross is also permitted by right.
You might have to park it.
But not, but that doesn't presuppose that it's viable. It doesn't mean that he could have enough parking to make a retail store viable that's less than 5,000 square feet. The viability is a function of how the site can be designed to accommodate his needs and whether those needs will align with our code. So our code has parking requirements for different uses as well. If it says you need 40 spots and you can't get 40 spots, he's not going to get a permit to do that use. So as Mr. Brown said, it's, the features of the site are a limiting function of what can be done there in the future.
Well, I'm sorry, so if he gets a rezoning, he's got to come forward.
Yes, and he may, depending on the use, need a site. Always need his own improvement.
If it's by right, he would need his own department.
Yes, he would, if there's land disturbance or help department. The only one reason you don't need a zoning department is if there's no land disturbance and no need for help department. 170-137.
So what if an applicant has a rezoning and they decide, they decide that there's not going to be any land disturbing or anything else? And they just go ahead with one of these events and they find out that we've got a problem?
I suppose if that scenario came to bear, then we would all find out together there's a problem.
Well, again, doesn't this have to go through Michelle?
Unless it required a site plan, which a carnival, field, party, fair, show, musical festival for profit, contemporary, requires a site.
For every event, for every individual event?
Well, that's not entirely clear, and there's been some discussion with that if you were called for another property in that area. Whether it could cover multiple events or not, Mr. Groff probably wrote an opinion on that.
Ms. Wozelski, and we suggested that the planning commission level, and it was alluded to sort of in the motion for approval in your material, that the applicant would come forward and file, basically file an application and file a proposal with zoning administrator approval for any of those events. And the events would be limited to two per year, that's in it as well. So I mean, there's a, you know, there's an intention here that we're, it's not, it's not the camel's nose of the tent where we're trying to, you know, get sort of sneak in and open up with, you know. That's right.
How it goes or not included in proffer and part of forceful in any way?
Well, I guess we didn't, you know, I don't want to have an event and then have them shut down. So if we had, if we had one event and there was a problem, of course, Ms. Summers would say no for the next one. But I want to have, you know, an event for several years, so I don't want to have to...
But it doesn't sound like that's the way it's set up right now. That, in other words, we have an event, you have an event, something doesn't go well. It takes out proffer, but it's that, that you've said in your letter or your application that you would be open to.
Well, unlike a special use permit or special exception where the board could attach certain conditions to allow the use to fit the property, this is not that.
Yes.
And so unless they wanted to include certain items within proffer, which would be pretty tough to do, so open-ended.
So back to, I'm sorry, back to my last question. Back to the site plan that needs to still be submitted and the VDOT letter. Is that Ms. Summers that gets to make the call as to whether or not the site plan's, you know...
Right, well, acceptable. The ordinance in 170-120 through 128 or something has very detailed requirements for site plans. And as I noted before, in cases where there are special use permits or special exceptions that is passed through more public process, or cases where it's by right, then I believe they're administratively approved and yes, in that scenario. So it depends on, in 17036 where the big use table is, if there's a P, then, you know, staff will be reviewing this. But if it's...
But it's part of this rezoning, they have, I mean, you get the rezoning and then they file the site plan.
Correct. Only for the things that they want to do. So they could do this rezoning and decide they want to have an auction establishment and they would have to, if there's an X in the table next to auction establishment, they would have to submit a site plan show. How are you going to meet the requirements of the ordinance to have an auction establishment?
I'm not even confident in that first year we would have an event, just because there would be so much going on.
We still have to... Yeah, we do. So before you, and you certainly appropriate to ask as many questions as you think are appropriate. But I do want to make it clear that sent to the code of Jan 1522297A, once you open the public hearing, proffers cannot be amended in any way in the material effect of the overall code. So I'm not suggesting anything, just saying, once you say, I opened the public hearing, here's the applicant's opportunity to modify that proffer statement.
Well, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm certainly willing to listen to a public comment, but I already have problems with music festival for profit, separate from it by right that the non-parking that we have on Sunday. I just want to put that up there. It's right there. I'll give you an idea of where, what I'm at. Somehow my name, and I don't even know today yet, they couldn't tell me how, so I was invited on this trip a little over a week ago to go down to the tidler area. The group that sponsored it was the local government advisory council. Basically what it is, it's probably similar to this river basin committee. We go down and we look at what's happening downstream. And I think it's very critical that we enforce as part of our ordinance up here that helps us deal with that. Because it's a very, very big concern downstream, the amount of everything that goes... amount of, of everything that goes into the river. So we're talking about parking, we're talking about where we're going to park these cars. I think it's very important that we know that now.
And yours, uh, stream overlay protection overlay district would help protect that some.
But that's got to be a part of this process.
Well, that's part of ordinance and implies their use is adjacent to a water. And it's, I mean, it doesn't preclude everything, but it does speak to those sorts of...
And I don't think we should try to rezon out everything, but I think we have to be very careful that we actually enforce our ordinance.
Right.
So you're saying that once we open the public comment...
Once you open public hearing...
We wanted to like scratch out, we would approve it and scratch out the carnival, field party, uh, actually, we can't require proffers.
You can't, it's, they're opportunit to offer changes would be limited if they're deemed to materially affect. And the idea is, uh, people wouldn't know whether they should be here or not, or...
Yeah.
If you, if you just advertised it with these proffers and then got rid of them all, then other people may have shut up for a public hearing.
I personally have the same issue that Mr. Fraser has.
Well, I, I have a question, I should follow up on what Mr. Fraser said. This may be old news, but it's an attachment to the package here from the health department on June 12th, uh, about a, uh, application for this, a consultant to design well accepted for the processing point. Is that different property?
It's, I believe it's got two properties that discussed in the same email.
And, and this is the complication of dealing with specific uses at a rezoning.
All he's, he won't get a building permit until he, till the health department can confirm to the building office that it's safe, adequate, proper accepted, or, or WSA is.
So it wasn't, it's been referred to the office of drinking water?
And because it'd be, uh, it's not just for personal use, the VDHODW will be issuing permits for the water system.
When's, and when does that happen? As part of, is that part of rezoning in that figure?
Yeah, as part of use, so if he has a public use, then...
Well, obviously if we're not going to approve it, he shouldn't have to go out and then spend a bunch of money, but at the same time, I have problems approving something that is piecemeal after the fact.
Well, and so if you were, if an applicant were to, um, sorry, for example, it may be their interest to, uh, have a telecommunications facility, right? This rezoning wouldn't allow that, it would just allow him to then move forward with a special exception for that particular use, and some of those issues may come up during that process, or a situation where it's by right, rather than those issues being worked out with the planning commission and board that you worked out with staff.
Yeah, I don't know, if y'all want to take the opportunity to scratch out this carnival, field party, there, everything else I think there's enough parking for, except that.
Would we?
So, I guess what I'm saying is I don't think I could vote for it, put that in there.
We've had the applicant go back and forth a couple of times on, on what we, what the planning commission has asked, asked the applicant to do.
The applicant submitted a proffer statement.
They were directed to do, or you use the word steer, which I like using, but they were directed to, to go for a rezoning as opposed to a...
Planning commissioner suggested this is an appropriate pathway.
But doesn't mean we have to agree.
No, no. Uh, it is adjacent, it's, it's not spot zoning or any conditional zoning or any precluded.
But for what's I have to agree, this isn't resembling spot zoning.
It's, it's immediately adjacent to HC, uh, so it's, it's appropriate from those standpoint. And, and so there can be consternation over the uses that haven't been proffered out, but you have to understand that all along 211, all of those properties can do the entire list by right. This just happens to be on the other side of the river.
Also, if I may ask, Michelle, the naval property is industrial property. Do they, can they by right have a carnival and field party and fair and all that stuff as, as an industrial property?
I'm looking it up for you.
I think the only, we're sure there's one that probably the former owner placed on there that couldn't be used for a, you know, junkyard or a graveyard.
No, so they couldn't?
They couldn't do it.
No, sorry.
Industrial, they can't do it.
That's correct.
That must be...
Correct.
If it would help with the, the board's concerns, one of the things the applicant would be willing to do would be, if, rather than simply striking the proffering away the possibility entirely of the field parties, music festivals, would be to have the proffer provide that any of those would be by special exception permit. That might help the board be, be more comfortable with the idea that any of those possible events in the future, would they come back, not just to the zoning administrator, would actually come back before the board supervisors and has the ultimate decisional authority on, on, on the appropriateness. And again, we'd like to reserve the possibility of one of those uses in the future, because we do believe, and that's, this is John's belief, that, that there might be the possibility of hosting some kind of an event like that at an appropriate scale. But if we, if we proffered that it would be by a special exception permit, then of course, then the board could make that decision whether that's appropriate.
This seems to me to be one of those where you want to see, you want to see how it's going, you know, is, you know, after a year or so, or after one or two events, all of a sudden you figure out, oops, you know, parking doesn't work, or, oh boy, you know, this, uh, this is messing up the river, or whatever.
I think that would help with Ms. Summers' concern, which I think she expressed in her staff report, which was that if the board was inclined to approve this rezoning, she would appreciate some guidance from, from the board in terms of what, what criteria would be applied to those, those administrative requests for approval of events. By, by maybe get something that requires a special exception, then, then we don't really have to even address that, because it's going to come back before the board supervisors.
Conditions could be applied to that special exception.
On a case by case basis.
It may be that you start out with tight conditions and see how it goes, and over time it may prove not to be an issue. You could, depending on the term issued to the special exception.
But we can't require a proffer.
No.
That has to be voluntary.
Right.
So, uh, that would require planning ahead a couple of months to get, go through the process of getting that special exception.
Mr. Parrish, your optimism is, uh...
Your definition of cussing is different.
I just whispered to Mr. Hallberg earlier, and I thought it would require probably about a six-month planning ahead, rather than a couple of months planning ahead.
And how many events do you think the job that you might do further?
I'm thinking one or two, and one of them would probably be a Delsummer event, which again, would not be huge.
So that amount of time would, that amount of time would, uh, do burn to you, in your opinion?
Well, I think, um, relative to the Delsummer museum, um, there was discussion at the planning commission, I believe, the board, that in the building, uh, that's, that's not a field party, fair, show, music festival.
I think, I think it would operate within the confines of the structure without any problems.
So in the event you had a Delsummer, uh, field party, uh, that would be outside?
Yeah.
And whereabouts would that be?
Oh, I, you know, uh, we might set up another little stage, you know, like somewhere down near the, uh, the parking area, or again, I might, uh, I might talk to Glassworks.
Just if that required a site plan as part of the process, so you figure all that out at the...
At the time, yeah.
So the way that works, Mr. Parrish, we, hypothetically, you would rezon tonight in the condition of a special exception?
Well, I would want, uh, there's a proffer statement in the packet that if it is cleared and signed, I think you'd probably be best served to take a short recess before we proceed with the public hearing. If they're reminding to, um, modify, I'd like something in writing, signed, um, and then you can reconvene here from the public and move on with the night.
We can, uh, table it for a few minutes to do a public comment or something?
I, you don't want to open the public hearing because I'm not fine with it.
No, you have to call it, public comment.
I suppose you could, I don't know if there's anybody here for that.
With the board is, with the board's thoughts, we'd like the opportunity to do that, if you want.
We just asked the people that want to speak at public comment to talk for a long time.
I believe you could table the, the matter, move another item up, dispense with it, and then recess, reconvene.
So you need a motion to that thing?
I don't need anything. They have to make.
So make a motion to table this into, I'm not sure what the gymnastics are, or what you're going to do, table this, not table, that's a bad word, table it.
You're not in the public hearing yet, so semantics are less important. We could just go on something.
Well, if you want to do that, we'll call it.
Well, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, uh, change the order of business for the next, uh, meeting on, uh, Q to R. Have public comment and ask the public to speak real slow.
What?
Is that part of the motion?
I don't want to miss that.
If you feel that does, if the semantics achieve the gymnastics on second.
Motion made, President. All right, can I?
If I interpret all that correctly, I do this public comment here.
Would you mind reading from the... Will we need a description of public comment?
A description?
No, please.
Well, not usually to be recognized, raise your hand, we recognize you, state your name and visit your comments, and then direct your comments to the board. Public comment, so.
Hello, my name is Bethan Boston, I'm a resident of Woodbury, Ray, and Spiritville, in the Piedmont District. A few weeks ago, my husband and I received notification from the county was considering changes in Mr. Hallberg's property.
Hold on, hold on. You want to speak at the public hearing? I'm sorry, there's confusion.
This is something, talking to the public, it's to speak.
Two different things, public comment, public hearing, so...
Well, I'm saying...
So if you want to speak to things other than the rezoning, you can do that now, and if you want to speak about the rezoning, you'll have an opportunity in just a couple of minutes.
Oh, so random things that have nothing to do with this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll have it in there.
I'm so sorry. Okay, okay, sorry.
I can tell if you need to.
If anyone else wants to, yes.
Hi, Patty Hardy Hampton District, and I'm wearing my Rack Community Theater act at the moment. I just wanted to let you know what we're doing for the Christmas program, because I think it's really exciting for the community and, you know, for everybody. This is, this is our cast list, there's 25 people in the cast, six of them are adults. They sometimes act like children, but they are chronologically adults. But, uh, I mean, this is a true community effort. We're doing Paul Reisler's show, The Talented Clementine, which is based on the children's book by the same name, and the songs are all, have all been developed by Kid Pan Alley. I think you all know what, what Kid Pan Alley is. In addition to having Kid Pan, Paul and Cheryl and Kid Pan Alley's contribution and, and effort put into this, Annie Williams and her crew have graciously stepped forward to help us with the quite considerable, uh, choreography in this, in this play. So Annie, Philip Rosemont, Kitty Kaiser, um, are going to be helping with that, and it's just a, a huge community effort. One of the parents is going to take over doing the costumes, another parent is working on props, um, and these are people who have high-powered, full-time jobs, and, you know, they're still stepping in and helping because their kids are there and because it's a community project. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of what we're doing if you, if you hadn't seen anything about it yet. The show opens on December the 6th, and it performs December 6th and 7th, and then hopefully we'll have a parade in the, I mean, a float in the parade, and then the next weekend, the 13th, 14th, 15th. And the times vary a little bit, so if you just watch for posters and postcards and things in the paper, you'll get what the times are. So, just wanted to be aware, and I hope you all come and see. Thank you.
How long does the show last, Mr. Hallberg?
I hope we get it down to less than an hour and a half, I'm hoping, an hour and 15 minutes. Don't want to have an intermission, thank you.
For the sake of stretching this out, do you have any plans for next year?
We don't, Mark. Do you, do you have any ideas that you'd like to put forward for a Christmas show?
No, I was trying to put you on the spot.
Oh, okay.
I believe he's offering to be in next year.
I think so, yeah.
I could say something, right? Something like Scrooge or something like that, I would say anything like that.
Yeah, uh, we, you know, it's all under advisement. But if you want to hear what we're planning to do next year, I'd be glad to keep going.
Sure.
Until they walk out of that room.
Yeah, until they walk out of that room. Something that I have always wanted to do since being artistic director is do something that would help groom directors, because we don't have a lot of directors. I've, this is my second show directing this year, and I'm going to be doing the spring show. So we're going to do a play called The Good Doctor, which is by Neil Simon, but within that play, there are all these like extended, um, comedy sketches that, and each of them is a spoof of a checkoff short story.
Wow.
And so I've already recruited several other, several people who would like to take on one of those little, those sketches to try their, just try out what it's like to be a director. I can understand why a new director would not want to take on a, you know, a full two-hour play, that's quite a commitment, but, um, I call this theater in little bites, and so, you know, maybe these folks that are stepping up to be directors of these, these sketches will be motivated and, and, and feel positive about moving forward to directing more things. It's also an opportunity to recruit actors who would like to be in theater, but again, don't feel confident to take on a whole two-hour play. They could be up there for 10 minutes and decide, you know, if they like it and how much they would like to, to go forward with it. So that's one of the things that, that we're, we're planning for the spring, and beyond that, I don't know, Mark, so if you have any ideas...
No, I just wanted, so, so now that you've done this, do you have opportunity for young people to also...
Oh, sure.
Learn to be directors?
Oh, oh, yeah, anybody, anybody who wants to be. I'm going to, I'll put out a call for people who are interested. I've done some, um, just sort of person-to-person outreach to some folks, or people have approached me and said they would like to try directing sometime. So, yeah, whoever wants to...
Sounds like great opportunities.
Yeah, I think so, and, you know, whoever wants to, you know, we, well, in, in our show, we have a kid who's like five, and then all the way to adult ages, I mean, we just, we have all, all ages, all abilities, all levels of, of experience, and we welcome that. You know, some of the kids have grown up in, um... You know, some of the kids have grown up in, in the RAC Theater and have gone on to study acting or broadcasting or, or theater in college. So it's really kind of a grooming ground for some of these kids. Maeve Cuba, at 13, probably has more acting credits than I do, because she started working with us when she was five, and she's just been progressively more and more taking on, taking on roles and taking on things. Some of the kids that have been on the stage have discovered that they really like the technical aspect better, working on music, working on lights or sound. So, you know, we've been encouraging that kind of technical interest as well. So, well, I see my time is up.
They're ready so much.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you sent agenda down.
Yeah.
Anyone here to speak?
Or just public comment?
There's public comment. The public comment closed.
I'm here to express my support for John's project.
Just a second. All right, so during that three interlude, Mr. Brown and Mr. Goff worked together to modify the, the proffer statement that's included in the packet, add a date, modify the section that speaks to the paragraph after the listing of items that were proffered out, it's modified to read as follows. The undersigned applicant hereby further proffers that any Carnival Field Party Fair Show or Music Festival for profit comment temporary, period levels 17036, to take place on the property will acquire approval, will require approval? Require approval, rather than, Rapid County Board of Supervisors as a special exception permit. And then further added is, if approved, applicant will arrange to have these proffer, will arrange to have these proffers recorded in the chain of title for the property so that we don't have to chase them down in the zoning records in a minute book that will be attached to the parcel, only to be upset if there's some future proffer change. So that is now part of the application proffered by the applicant, signed by the applicant.
So that runs with the law?
Yes. And so this one bullet point is completely eliminated, Carnival Field Party, it's just, it basically changes permitted by right to SE with the specific language. Okay. So any other questions or comments from the Board?
Could you read that again?
Zero. If no other comments are, the appropriate proffer, the public hearing then.
Public hearing is open.
Hello, again, I'm Bethany Boston. I'm basically to Mr. Hallberg's property at 8:31 Woodmore Row, also in the Piedmont District. I came here tonight with like three pages written of how scared I was of what was by right, because I didn't realize that until earlier this evening, but that was even a thing. But I appreciate what Mr. Hallberg's doing with the property. He's built a beautiful rock bowl, he's working with a mill. I support if he wants to make cider all day long, or sweet cider, or permanent cider, whatever he's doing with it, and the Delsomer stuff of that. So now that you just X that out, I really don't have any comments. I'm not trying to be that neighbor up front, so I'm not like, this crab, it's on Bewitch, peeking out the window to see what he's doing, and then running up here and playing, but I am comfortable with that, and basically agreed that that was fair.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to speak in support of the project. Do I have to go there?
No, maybe if you say that, give us your name and...
I'm Pat Curry from Dr. Valerie Hampton District, and I'd just like to say, I think it's a wonderful project. It's going to be an asset both economically and culturally to the area, and I hope you guys can do everything possible to make it occur, make it happen.
Sounds like... Anyone else? Anyone else here? I declare closed. Public comments.
Public, all right. So with the public hearing closed, if there are any other questions, comments, the Summers or I or the applicant can attempt to answer them. As Miss Summers noted, there is a draft ordinance including the packet. If you're inclined to approve, then there's a draft resolution in the packet if you're inclined to disapprove.
That seems to me like the problem's been solved.
They still have to work that with beat out or get the beat out letter.
So that is a function, that's a function of the use, so they may not have a use for 10 years. I hope that doesn't happen to you, and you want to move faster than that. But that would happen along with their pace for use, just like it would if it stayed residential real.
So, I mean, I don't live next door, so if the people next door don't have any problem, I don't have any problem, so I make a motion that we approve this with the proffers.
Adopt an ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt an ordinance by the Board of Supervisors, Rapid County, Virginia, to amend the Rapid County zoning act to be classified 5.675 plus one acres owned by John Perry Hallberg, located in the Piedmont next to our district from RR5 residential real district to HC commercial highway conditional, for the purpose of developing a winery.
And that's, that was his intended purpose, but it is for the rezoning.
At the existing museum.
And this is the ordinance in the packet.
A second here. Motion made, the second?
Yes, Roach Hall.
Roach Hall, hello, Mr. Fraser. Mr. Lozenkin.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
And I myself. You said, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hope you get a lot. Still a little, I've been all red. Any old business? Any new business?
Motion, John.
You got a motion, you want to have a second? You want to have a second?
Second.
Okay, all motion, please, may I?
May I?